Yeah, welcome to tonight's school meeting, June 15. Role call, Mrs. Sininger.
Mrs. Brinkman.
President.
Mr. Rudy.
President.
Mr. Schaaf.
President.
Mr. Chumlee.
President.
President.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to withdraw to executive session for the following purposes: Preparing for negotiation or bargaining session with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment, Considering the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, or demotion, or compensation of a public employee, and considering the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or student. Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Mr. Rudy. Role call, Mrs. Sininger.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy.
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumlee.
Yes.
Okay. We'll be withdrawing into executive session and will rejoin the public session at 7:00 P.M.
Are we live?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Sininger, will you please pull us out of with executive session?
This is Brinkman.
Present.
Mr. Rudy.
Present.
Mr. Schaaf.
Present.
Mr. Chumley.
Present.
And Mrs. Delaney is absent tonight.
Moving on to the pledge of allegiance, please join me in our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mrs. Sininger, approval of minutes.
Yes, Madam President, if it's okay with you, I would like to just combine these three, 4.01, 4.02, and 4.03 in your packet. You have the minutes from the regular board meeting held on May 27th. You also have the meeting minutes from the special board meetings held on June 1st and June 8th. I respectfully request that you approve the minutes as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer, do we have a motion?
A move.
Mr. Schaaf, in a second.
Second.
Mr. Chumley, discussion. Hearing none, Mrs. Sininger, roll call.
Mr. Schaaf.
Yes.
Mr. Chumley.
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion approved. Moving on to treasurer's business, Mrs. Sininger.
Yes, item 5.01, before you, you have appropriation amendments for funds 006, which is our food service fund, and Fund 018, which is our public school support. The appropriation amendment in Fund 006 is to account for our increased number of participants that we had in our meal service due to COVID-19. You know, during that time period, as Superintendent Adams was updating the board and the community every month, we served a tremendous amount of our community when the closure of the schools occurred due to COVID-19. We actually, we actually served over 153,000 meals. We had applied and we received a waiver for the seamless summer option, so we will be reimbursed for all of those meals, but it did require additional appropriations. And so I'm requesting an approval, requesting an increase of 450,000. Finally, in our 018 fund, our public school support, we do have an account within that fund that's isolated only for preschool. And so within that preschool account, we do have various expenditures, including salaries. And so I'm requesting an increase of the appropriations of $90,000 to account for the increase in appropriations this year due to preschool, preschool salaries being paid for from that account. I respectfully request that you approve the appropriation amendments as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation of the treasurer, do we have a motion?
A move.
Mr. Schaaf, in a second.
Back in.
Mr. Chumley, discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item 5.02 is a facilities presentation that I'm going to defer to Mr. Lance Perry, who is our Director of Operations, and he's going to provide us with an update of facility.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'm going to go ahead and attempt to share my screen here for the presentation. Is that looking good?
It is. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come and get, provide you with an update. I know Mr. Dyer shared, had an update last week, so I feel like two in a row, I'm feeling special. So we're gonna jump right into this here. So the first topic we're going to talk about tonight is the, the West Claremont Middle School roof replacement. And this has been an annual thing that we've been working through the roof replacement sections of the middle school now for five years in a row. This year, we're looking to do section four of the north building. The next slide is actually a picture, so we will show what section that is of the building. Approximately 10,800 square feet of roof. Pending board approval, we will try to, we will get the project started as soon as possible with the expectation that it be completed in August well before staff and students return. The good news is, is that the pricing was held from the 2019 bid. They actually held the pricing for us, which probably saved us about 2% to 3%. But that, that was some very good news. The materials and the installer are the same as 2019, the roof that we replaced in 2019. The materials are provided through state contract in Garland, and the roofing contractor is A.W. Farrell. And again, we were very pleased with the contractor's performance, and we've always been pleased with the quality of product that Garland provides. I'm just highlighting that this continues the current long-range roof plan for the middle school that we've been working on and continue to do so to spread out costs as much as possible. So our next slide is the picture, the roof divided in the sections. Go through a little detail here, as you look at the numbers, you can see that there are different colors. The green numbers with the years associated below them are actually sections that we've already replaced. So this is our, another way for us to track the progress that we're making. Section four, as noted before, is the area that we are looking to replace this summer. If you notice that there's a red dotted line at the top of the second section that is marked section four, that roof was actually divided to keep our costs down, and the upper half of that roof was not, not in as poor condition as the areas we need to replace. So the two sections marked in red number four are the areas that will be replaced, again totaling 10,800 square feet. At the end of each section that I have, I'm going to ask for questions, and then at the end of the presentation, I will open it up for questions again. So at this point in time, does anybody have any questions in regards to the roof replacement for the middle school? Keeping it moving. Next, we're going to talk about the proposal for the athletic field house. This is a structure that we're asking the board to approve to move forward on construction. The West Claremont High School has approximately 750 student athletes and over 200 in the band program. And currently, the batting cages for softball and baseball are off-site because there is no optimal because there is no optimal options on the campus. At this time, if we were to have the batting cages on-site, it would actually be in the competition gym and/or the auxiliary gym, which get used 24/7 all the time, which is a great thing. In addition to that, we identify this space as a very flexible, open space that will support all sporting programs and student activities. Just highlighting the fact that boys and girls sports, as well as cheer, etc., would be able to use it. So we'll go into some more detail about that in the, in the next few slides. Funding for this structure. Dollars used is from the agreement that we have with Wellington Orthopedics and Sports Medicine. They are a branch of Mercy Health. They actually provide us with trainers at both, the athletic trainers, one at the high school and one at the middle school to support our student athletes. They also allow some working programs for kids, but it's an excellent partnership that we've had with them for quite a few years. We signed a five-year agreement in 2018. And we are currently in year three of that agreement. The structure itself is 60 by 100 feet, a big, very basic structure, but it's 6,000 square feet in total under roof. There are 10 by 12 sectional doors and three additional doors for access in egress. Any lights that are shown on the plans, which we'll show here in a minute, are LEDs. In the wall packs are LEDs as well, so very efficient from a utilities perspective. And also, in the plans, you will see large fans that are up in the ceiling that we will talk about. And also, we've collected some feedback to request to look into possible adding a couple exhaust fans as well. In addition to that, I'll show you from the picture the best that I can that in the proposal, there's also 120-foot net to protect the building from the practice field because it's in the same area. The functionality of this field house. It's used as indoor training for multiple fall and spring sports and a flexible space for student programs. Again, I'm just highlighting that this is a wide-open, under-roofed space. So it's not specific to any one or multiple sports, even though baseball and softball are the first that come to mind because of the batting cages in particular. The batting cages right now are used in a shared space that we are allowed to use or have been permitted to use through UT, which is off-site up off McMahon. At some point in time, that space will not be, be available to us. Granted, we don't know when that is. We haven't been given a timeline of when we need to get out of there, but just highlighting the fact that right now, the cages are off-site. Other possible uses are boys' and girls' golf, tennis, track soccer, cross-country, cheer, wrestling football, band team meetings, on-sites events, etc. I spent a lot of time with Mr. Collins in talking about what all he could use it for. He's very excited about the opportunity pending approval. He just spoke to how much our campuses are used, which is a great thing. It would just give us that much more freedom to be able to continue to use for training and meetings and any number of things. This is our first picture showing the proposed site for the building. As you can see, it's just pretty much a large rectangle, wide-open space. The existing building to the bottom corner there is actually the maintenance building. And as you look at the slide directly to the south of the slide is the practice field. And then again, to the south is where the net will be to protect the building from the practice field from balls or anything that could fly over or get thrown over. So the exterior of the structure itself will, will mirror similar colors to the metal buildings that are currently on-site, want it to look very much the same. And also notice that the, the pit up there, that it does not interfere with the disc pit. Here's the one slide with the structural details to get you an idea of what the, the structure would look like. And I'm highlighting the fact that it's very basic. The ceiling height is about 16 feet, so it's not super tall. That was on purpose, again, talking with James, this fits his need the best. You can see the, the large roll-up door there and then the access points. If you notice the two fans in the middle that we referred to earlier, those are actually up in the rafters. So the idea would be is with the fans, just similar to the fans that are currently in the auxiliary gym, they can move a lot of air to keep the space cool and moving. But in addition to that, like I said, I've already reached out to the architect about the possibility of adding some exhaust fans. Here's a close-up of the, the details of the structure. Again, it shows the fans and then all of the lights and the, and the WPs are actually the wall packs on the exterior to provide lighting for security, etc. So do you have any, are there any questions in regards to this structure? And if you'd like me to scroll up to a different picture, please just let me know.
Lance, you said that there was, it was 16 foot. Is that at the center peak or is that at the side? Like, yeah, that, that's the picture.
Right, right here at the bottom. The picture to the bottom left shows that line at 16 feet, that, that is to the bottom of the rafters.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yep. One more thing I'd like to highlight is that the annual cost to use the building, the utilities for the building is minimal. I project that it'd be less than $4,000 a year, primarily because it's LEDs and, and the fans only when they're running. So the monthly cost to run the building will be minimal at best, which is great news. Any other questions before I move on? Okay. I know Mr. Dyer did a, an update last week, but wanted to highlight that Mr. Dyer and I have been meeting on a regular basis with his pending retirement. So I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Mr. Dyer. It has been a blessing to have him the last five years. Much like a security blanket. And I'm on a miss him, so just want to say, thank you, sir. So these are the most recent pictures that we have. Up in the top corner shows the exterior. One of the more exciting pictures for Ed and myself is the, the one to the, directly to the bottom of that, where the walk-in freezers and coolers have been installed. These were delayed due to COVID out of California. So that was great news to get them on-site and start to get them put together. So we're very happy with that. The next two pictures, top and bottom, are, is a picture of the classroom or a classroom. I want to highlight that Dennis Vance has been working diligently on getting the wars, the floors waxed. He's actually completed all the rooms that are made available to him, and he only has one classroom left. So he's worked really well with the contractors. If you were to go over there today, once the floor is finished in wax, they actually come back and cover it in paper to protect it. And they've been working really well together, and we thank both the contractor and Dennis for the work. In the upper corner, and in addition to that, you see the office. You can see some casework being installed, carpets down, even though it's covered. And in the bottom corner shows restrooms with the partitions in, looking very complete. So to go over a few details, the site, site work finish grading is nearing completion. The front entrance concrete was poured with the traffic guidelines to follow. Pavement curbs will be starting. The monument sign is to be installed later this week or early next week. Tensing is being installed around the retaining pond. Again, I'm highlighting that the classrooms have all been waxed, which is good news. And cat, classroom furniture is actually on-site and being staged. We should have taken a picture with the furniture in there, so, because it starts to look really complete. In addition to that, contractor actually has some cleaning crews in now doing some detailed cleaning. As we all know, with the construction project, we fight dust for about the next 12 months, so. But I highlight all this just to say, we are at a great place at June 15th on where Clough Pike is, and we're very excited about the, to get in there and get our hands on it as soon as we can.
I also just wanted to point out from a financial standpoint, from, from OFCC, you know, this Clough Pike project, Summerside, Willaville, they were all at about $45 million that we received from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. And to date, we've drawn, we've drawn down about 43.2 million. So we are closing out, we're getting close to the end of these, and that's a good thing.
Again, I'm highlighting the casework in the offices. Again, that signs are nearing completion, coming to the end of the process. Exterior doors are being installed and finalized. Technology projectors and electronic devices, installation is ongoing, but the vast majority of it is complete. But we are still on, on track to finish on time and on budget and very excited. Any questions about Clough? Okay, I'm going to transition now to Brantner. I need to provide an update on where we are with the, with Brantner Elementary. The OFCC master plan, which has been approved, the next stage is to demolish Brantner, which includes the abatement as in asbestos in the removing of the building. Also includes the grading of the site and reseeding so that we can use the property or whatever we identify. The time to begin this, it's time to begin the process of identifying the scope and the bid. So again, highlighting the master plan, it's a step in a process. And as Clough Pike's going to come offline, the next stage will be to remove Brantner. And the next slide is actually a map showing the limits of the demolition. There is some flexibility with this, but very little. Would like to highlight, as you notice the, if you can see, they are talking about keeping the sidewalk all the way around the edge. Ed and I are going to be talking to them about the possibility of removing that at the time. But we do want to keep the blacktop space in that area if possible. There is some newer blacktop in that area, and this, and the sign would also go as well. The building sign would go. But as you can see, that entire area that is shaded out would be removed and, as stated previously, regraded and reseeded. So as we look at this, we're starting to get into the details of what, what do we want to do with this property? So we've been working with the OFCC and Paul and Elivar. And we're actually scheduled for a meeting in two weeks of next steps in identifying the scope. So at this point in time, I'm just going to open it up for questions for anything that I presented on, including Brantner. And if you need me to scroll up to one of the photos, just let me know. One of the other slides, just let me know, but I appreciate your time.
Do we have any questions for Lance?
So I, I do, this, Dave Shaft, this is, um, we had talked about in the facility commission, committee about whether we do move forward with demolishing Brantner or, or if it would be in our best interest to keep Brantner and use the facility for something other than K-12 instruction, which I believe OFCC said that we could not use that facility because of the improvements, but being able to use it for something else. Lance, can you speak to the, if we were not to demolish, what kind of cost we were looking at, we would, we would be looking at to make that building?
The first thing is that there is just over $400,000 that is from the state sitting that's associated with the current master plan. The first thing would be is that money would actually go back to Columbus. So the entire project, the demolition, etc., actually would that entire, that $400,000 should cover the entire project, so no cost to us as a district. In 2018, I did a roof study in the district to identify a short-term and long-term plan of roof replacements. And Brantner, of course, was part of that program. And in 2018, all of the roofs associated with that school was on a zero-to-five-year replacement. So that's been three years ago. When we look at the estimated cost to replace those roofs, it was over 1.5 million currently. So one of the, if we do keep the building or if we move in that direction, that would be a cost that we would have to absorb soon. And that doesn't, that would only be covering the roofs. That doesn't improve on anything within the building or anything of that nature. In addition to that, even if we had it sitting vacant, there is a utility cost to that, obviously, and a management cost to that. But the roof replacement, which again, it's at the end of its life, would definitely be the most considerable cost that we'd be facing now. Does that answer your question?
It does. And also, the, you had mentioned the, the asbestos removal as part of the 400, or the 400,000 or whatever else from OFCC. And I think that in and of itself is almost the, was the tipping point for me, along with the, the roof replacement.
Yes, the asbestos abatement is very expensive, which that's the nice thing about if we move forward with the master plan, that that's already calculated into the budget for removal, which is very nice. Are there any other questions? I guess I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Sininger.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
Okay.
Okay, just kind of piggybacking on Mr. Perry's presentation. The next two items are related to accepting the bids related to, first, the middle school roof. That's the north building, section four. The recommendation is to approve the roofing material and services bid for the West Claremont Middle School as presented. The bid is $316,119 from Garland DBS. I do want to point out that this will be paid for from the permanent improvement fund, not the general fund. If you remember, we've talked about the fact that in our permanent improvement fund is where we receive about $6 million a year from inside millage, but the majority of that goes toward our annual payment on the high school, as well as 628,000 has to be carved out every year to meet our OFCC half-mill maintenance. So for the next few years, the budget in that permanent improvement fund, there's about $450,000 available for district-wide capital improvements. So because we don't have enough money to do the high school roof in totality all at once, we've been doing it in phases. And so this 316,119, if approved tonight, will be paid out of that 450,000. With that being said, I respectfully request that you approve the bid as submitted for 316,119.
You've heard the recommendation from the treasurer for replacement of partial of the middle school roof. Do we have a motion?
A move.
Mr. Chumley, in a second, by Mr. Shaft. Discussion? Discussion? Hearing done, Mrs. Senator, roll call.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item five point oh four is to the recommendation to approve the bid from, for the West Claremont High School Athletic Fieldhouse. Again, this will be paid for out of our permanent improvement fund. However, this is a separate account in the permanent improvement fund, wherein we isolate those dollars that have come to us from Mercy Health that are carved out specifically for this project. So we already have received the funds from Mercy Health, and they are sitting there for this purpose. The bid, the lowest bid was received from John P. Tomlin and Sons Incorporated for two hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. I respectfully request that you approve the bid as submitted.
For the recommendation of the treasurer, do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Mr. Rudy and a second?
Second.
Mr. Schaaf. Discussion? Mrs. Senator, roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Motion approved.
In terms of treasurer's comments, I just want to let you know that I am keeping a close eye on the state budget. We have not received any indication yet from the Ohio Department of Education what our budget will be for the two thousand twenty, twenty one school year. The state did issue last week, the state of Ohio issued their monthly financial report. And so far to date this year, the general fund receipts for the state as a whole are about one billion dollars less than what was originally projected. They did see that in terms of the total unemployment claims across the state that they were down significantly in the month of April. And they are down in May, but not to the extent that they were in April. So I watched on the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services website pretty closely on what the unemployment rate is here in our county, and we're currently in April, we were at about fourteen percent unemployment rate. And that was up from four percent in March. So it it jumped pretty drastically there in April. So they haven't yet released the May unemployment rate for our county. And so I'm watching that pretty closely. So as soon as I hear information from the state, which I reached out to ODE representatives again today, just to see if they could give any indication as to when we might see that. We think it's going to be in July, but we're not totally sure about that. So I'm watching that closely and I'll update you as soon as I know any more information. In terms of the next board meeting, which is on June twenty ninth, I will have for you the final appropriations for this year in June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, as well as any end of the year transfers and advances. And I will bring to you the two thousand twenty, twenty one appropriations. And we do have a finance committee meeting scheduled for next week that will vet that through the finance committee before bringing it to you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to superintendent's business, Mrs. Adams.
Yes, Dr. Foltz is going to share the personnel with you.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, and this is Adams, Mrs. Senator. In front of you is the personnel agenda for June fifteenth. On the agenda, we have a resignation of two teachers. We also have a hiring of two administrators. Elaine Giorgio is replacing Megan Davidson. Last board meeting, Megan Davidson resigned, she's going on to work at the state support team thirteen, I believe, so we wish her well with that. With her resignation, it allows us to re-envision her role and how to support, how it will support the district. This again is not a new position, but rather repurposing of a position that already exists. So we welcome Elaine Giorgio pending your approval. Also, Jesse Slusher is replacing Cheryl Turner as the new principal of Merwin Elementary. Cheryl has replaced Stacy McMahon's role. And we welcome Jesse to our team. And both Elaine and Jesse are going to be value added to our district. Also, on the agenda is the proposed hiring of five teachers. These are replacing teachers who resigned this spring. The agenda also includes proposed approval for contracting new for auxiliary staff, hiring of classified staff, contract renewal for classified unlimited contracts, reassignment of certified staff and hiring students for workers to assist in the technology department. Every summer, we hire student workers to help clean and process and reset all the technology needs that we have across the district. And further, the agenda includes proposed approvals for supplemental contracts for home tutors, hiring substitute classified employees and a stipend. So with this, I respectfully request that you approve the personnel agenda as submitted.
You've heard the recommendation. Do we have a motion?
I'm moved.
Mr. Rudy and a second?
Second.
Mr. Chumley, discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Item six point oh two is the federal grants funds procurement updated policy. This is being brought to you as a, so it can align to the federal guidelines. And so I ask that we have the first reading tonight by you and that we will bring this policy to be officially approved by you at the June twenty ninth meeting. And again, this is to align with our federal guidelines. Item six point oh three is the resolution to suspend credit and GPA standards for athletics and district sponsored clubs and activities. We are presenting this resolution to you today to fall in line with the Ohio High School Athletic Association, one time adjustment and eligibility requirements for the fall sports in two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty one, so that all of our programs align. So this is not meant to be a permanent change, a one time plan based on the fallout of COVID nineteen. So the recommendation is that you approve the resolution to suspend credit and GPA standards for athletics, district sponsored clubs and activities for our next school year.
You've heard the recommendation of the superintendent, I'll put that on the floor in the form of a motion and ask for a second.
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 Mr. Chumley, second? Discussion? Mrs. Senator, roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item six point oh four is the West Claremont School District reentry planning update. And I'm going to have that set up for you there. And just want to take a few minutes to explain our process that we are using as we're working together with our stakeholders to return, reimagine and revamp our processes. So first and foremost, we want to stay committed to our mission of committing to excellence with every learner, every day and every way. And what I want to call to your attention and the importance of how we reenter our school system in the fall next year is that we really need to be looking at individual students more than ever. So that idea of a learning that is more personal. We want to make sure that students have that sense of belonging, that they feel part of something, that they feel cared for and they're part of a bigger community. And we want to make sure that we're attending to their future aspirations and that they are future ready. So that's our commitment. The approach that we've been taking this spring is first and foremost, just to remind everyone that our assumption here is that we are not returning to business as usual. And that it's important for us to not only think about our physical space, but our academics and be able to have a plan that is flexible, that we can move in and out of based on a public health crisis. And so the first stage has really been listening and learning. We've completed a thought exchange with our families. And we are currently experiencing a survey with our families that will go into more specific details of their preferences. And so that deadline is tomorrow. And so at our next board meeting, I will be able to share with you more specific results. We are establishing guiding principles in our work so that the decisions that we make align with our vision and with our strategic plan and our mission. And I'll be sharing some of the drafts with you tonight, and we're going to continue to refine those the rest of the month as we scenario plan. We'll be building some prototypes, so some options that we could come back into and move in and out of as the the health crisis progresses or subsides in our community. We will build a plan that will be able to put on paper and and share with the community. So it is our, it's our intention on the fifteenth and thirtieth of every month this summer to bring updates. We want to make sure that people are brought along the way and that they understanding all the constraints and all the factors that we are factoring in. The one thing that is true, that is just part of the process, we're moving forward and building a plan regardless, but we're still waiting for the Ohio Department of Education to give their plans. It was at first supposed to come out in like mid-May and then June first. And so we're still awaiting those. We're hoping that they're going to come in the next week or two to help give us guidance. But in, in lieu of having those specific guidance plans, we are continuing to to collaborate and partner with superintendents across the city. Today, Mr. Overby met with the Claremont County Superintendent and also the Health Commissioner, so that again, we are marching together collaboratively. And not that we are going to have cookie cutter plans of one another, but we want to stay as in line and as in sync as possible to serve our students best. And then, of course, whatever decision we make will be looked at from a resource allocation. So whether it's repurposing staff, maximizing our resources to the best of our ability, we'll be very intentional about that and keeping you posted along the way. The thought exchange results, I'm again, not going to go into detail with you today, but wanted you to know that over two thousand and four hundred and eight people participated. And just asking a question about the last several weeks to just know, then working and learning remotely for the past eight weeks. And if the next school year required continued use of remote learning, what positive outcomes can we build on? What challenges do we need to address and what additional practices should we consider? And we had student voice in this, in the middle school and the high school, parent voice, elementary, middle and high and staff. And so it was just a great turnout and really gave us some good information. So you can see here by page, first is the student summary. And high school and middle school students really wanted to talk a lot about the workload, that the fact that they really need support, that sometimes they felt overloaded. And they they really need help with a systematic way to organize the learning, to help them focus and stay structured. They also need a lot of flexibility and support. And in both items, of course, students were missing that social connection and just the importance of social emotional learning in the curriculum. So if you click on the actual reports, which we're not going to do tonight, you can actually see bar graphs with a little more graphical detailing of the the data and actual comments that the students had just to get a deeper look. And these are the tools that we're using as administrators to help drive our decision making process and be responsive to our, our number one customer, our students. Next, we have the parents survey. And parents in high school and middle school talked a lot about having regular check ins with the students and just discuss the challenges of keeping students engaged and motivated in the remote setting. They also were concerned about the social emotional learning. So you can definitely pick up on some themes from both the students and the parents. And engagement and structure and systems were important to both. In the elementary, from the parents' standpoint, that structure in the program, the routine that school often provides felt lacking. And so they would like for some ways for us to replicate that. The whole connection with their peers and their ability to be social and have their emotions regulated. And no, our elementary students in particular, when they use technology in their schooling, it's more of an event because the teachers have to make sure they have a cart and that, because we are not one to one in the elementary at this time. And so there is a big, there was a big learning curve for both the students, the parents and the teachers as they went to daily use of computer and technology uses. And it's just very different from, from like our middle school who have access to it on a regular basis, and that's just part of the normal routine. So there were several, you know, hurdles they had to overcome and they they really did make the most of it. In terms of staff, they also talked about the engagement level and the challenge to motivate. They did note that in some families, it was very clear they didn't have access to all the tools and all the things that students needed. The, the whole idea of the mental health and the social emotional piece of school, they were hugely concerned about. And that was really true in both the high school and the middle school. And something that was noted, though, among elementary, middle school and high school is just their appreciation for the just in time professional learning. So I do just want to thank again the team that was involved in that, the curriculum team, as well as all the instructional leaders and the coaches that helped to provide that real time support to help them navigate not only the technology tools, but the best way to incorporate it. So as I said, you can go into these reports and get, take another deeper dive and it really paints a picture. But we certainly found some themes across the feedback. And just the need to have meaningful lessons for our students, being able to make sure that we're attending to their social emotional needs and equity across the district that need to attend to all learners, not just some. And this really can't be educational lottery, we have to have a systematic approach to supporting our students. And so, of course, we will take all that into consideration. I can't say enough how proud I am of our school system for their response. We just know we can do better. And as we're planning for the fall and uncertainties of maybe in the winter, when the flu season is at its peak, we want to be able to have a stronger response. You'll see that we have a deadline of June sixteenth for another survey that gets really specific with our parents about things such as, do you, is it really important to you that your students are wearing face masks? Is it important that students are six feet apart from each other, social distancing? Is it important to you that we have a remote learning option for your child if you're not comfortable sending them back to face to face school in the fall? And so we, it's a long survey, and so I just thank all the parents for taking the time. And I have to say, there's been some reaction out there of, I can't believe they're asking about this. And what we want to do for our parents is just really show everyone that we're looking at every single angle. We're taking advice from across the state. We're looking at surveys to glean as much information as we possibly can. And that we will continue to share our prototyping along the way to get further reactions. So without guidance and strict rules, as we've kind of had in place at this point, we're having to create our own. And so we want to make sure we're taking the values of the community, the safety of our students as our number one resource there. So at this point, we have three thousand, three hundred and forty one responses when I checked earlier this afternoon. And that's one response per child. So with us having about eighty five hundred students, we'd really like to see that number go up. It's to help make sure we get the most complete picture. As we go into our planning, we are driven by our values and our guiding principles. So when you look at, we are on the rise relationships, that's really about making sure that every student is known well by adults in our schools. And not only from an academic standpoint, but from a social emotional standpoint and that mental health piece, that they're doing regular check ins. That's very important to us. And that we are a people first organization that takes all stakeholders into account when we make decisions. In terms of innovation, our value really is just rethinking school. We know that the twenty first century offers many challenges for our students regardless of COVID nineteen. And that we want to continue to push and strive ourselves to be in a continuous improvement mindset and to rethink. Maybe things that have always worked are not as effective as they are. And and with student engagement and motivation as top of mind for teachers and parents, we want to continue to to modernize our practices to best serve our students. Student centered environment is one of our values. And really, that's all about that personalized learning for the student. It's about that sense of belonging that a student has, that they feel they're cared for and they're part of something bigger than themselves. They're a part of this community. And that their aspirations are addressed, that they have this future ready opportunity to dream and hope for their future and be prepared in the way that they need to to be successful when they walk across that graduation stage. And finally, empowerment is really about tapping into each person's unique gifts and talents that they bring to the table and empowering them to use their skills to do well. And so that what that takes is a community of people coming together, our parents, our educators, our staff, our, our community leaders to really help support and empower that student's learning experience. And so we will make decisions based on those strong values. As well as in our strategic themes, I want to point out just a couple of things that we're going to hone in on as we're making decisions. Under equip and engage, what we want to make sure is that we're attending to student and staff safety and wellness. So we'll be making decisions that puts that in the forefront. We'll also be making decisions that show our commitment to equity and inclusion as we work to serve all students. Under grow academic achievement and educational opportunity, what we will hone in on here, again, is student centered learning. We know that one size is not going to fit all. It's going to be very important that we are addressing student information and data that we have to so show where they are in the learning progression. We know that one size is not going to fit all. It's going to be very important that we are addressing student information and data that we have to so show where they are in the learning progression. And respond accordingly, because everyone's going to be in a different place. We are expecting students to come with gaps. And we're going to have to be creative in exponentially filling those gaps and growing their learning. And secondly, quality instruction. You'll see a reference sometime to busy work in the notes from the students as well, some of the parents and the teachers. What we want to do is make sure that we're using sound pedagogy and strategies that effectively incorporate technology. And although that there's some new learning and all of that, we commit to that learning and continuing to take some risks and try some new things to best engage and educate our students. And embrace innovative learning, again, as as mentioned, innovation is really about us realizing that we know we're not where we want to be. And we're going to have to take some risks and we're going to have to have this continuous improvement mindset to say, we're not doing everything wrong. We're we're not terrible. We just know we can be better. And and so it's about each individual person being that learner, being that risk taker and getting there and trying new things that are innovative. That are going to inspire students to to high levels. And no matter if we're face-to-face or remote, we want to effectively use technology to help open up doors for us. And then finally, optimizing partnerships and aligning our resources. We certainly will have to maximize our resources. There is going to have to be an investment in coming back to school. And we will be keeping a very close eye on that. And to do that effectively, we know that's going to mean we're going to have to continue to partner with our community business leaders, our philanthropic organizations, our parents and our staff. And we're a pretty collaborative bunch. I have to say, I'm very proud of the partnerships in West Claremont. But this this kind of learning and this kind of challenge certainly calls for a higher degree of that. And so we will continue to pursue and ensure that our students have the vital resources that they need. So as we work through our plans, we will be doing these things and keeping all those guiding principles that I just shared with you in mind as our anchors. We'll be identifying all the knowns and unknowns as mysterious as coming back to school can seem in some ways. There are a lot of things that we do know about teaching and learning and safety and protocols that we can call on. So we will separate what we know and what we don't know. From that, we will build scenarios. We'll have some options. And as I, as I mentioned. You know, being on different webinars across the state. It's very clear that the Ohio Department of Education is expecting face-to-face options for our students as well as remote options and the ability to move in between. And so we'll be very mindful about what will be those signposts that we will use to trigger needing to to change our plan, to tweak our plan throughout the year. And so this is going to cause us to be more reflexive and more flexible and responsive than we've probably ever been as a school system. From our scenarios, we will recognize our consistencies and we'll prioritize. So that we spend the summer months of June and July as administrators and other stakeholders, building those teams. And investing our time in things that we can control. You know, one of the visuals we often see in this is that, you know, new learning is kind of like whitewater rafting. It's that turbulent tide a lot. That is kind of the new norm right now. And so what we have to do as an organization is really figure out what paddles do we have, what can we control? And that's our rowing together as as a team. And so so how do we do that and prioritize to maximize our effectiveness? And then finally, communication. As you know, communication is extremely important to us. And we will, we will be, as a result of our work, there will be two guiding documents that will come out of this. One will be a guidance document for parents and families. And another document will be kind of a playbook for educators so that everyone kind of knows the ground rules and can make quality decisions in light of that. The scenario prototyping, just to kind of give you a sense, we'll be working on the continuum of a very fixed schedule, which is what we're used to following. To a more flexible schedule, which is what we came out of the spring, to 100% in the building, to 100% virtual. And so we plan to move along those continuums as required in the school year. And we want to make sure that as we move in and out of scenarios, if required, that it's seamless and it's very smooth. And so that's why we're doing a lot of preparation here in the summer. We're not expecting to be perfect. We're just expecting to be very thoughtful, taking everything that we've learned from the spring, everything that we know is true about kids and putting a good plan into place. And so our rhythm, as I've mentioned before, will be to communicate on the 15th and the 30th of every summer month. And another thing I just mentioned, wanted to mention to you is that we are working hard to collaborate with Claremont County School Districts across the county. And our our goal really is to stay in alignment with them and to stay in step. And so some of our communication might depend on how we work together as a team, but that, but we really value that collaboration and staying in sync to best serve our students in the whole county. And finally, we will be sure that along the way that we're keeping you abreast of the financial impact of any decisions, if there are any, along the way. As we, as we build our our most responsive approach and plan with our students. So board members, that kind of gives you a sense of the work here over the next month or so. And was just curious if you guys have any questions?
So I assume that a lot of this is, we're just moving forward with what's best for West Claremont. But also keeping an ear open for guidance from the state, which is, I assume, lacking. Because they don't know, they know as much as we do and don't know a lot of what's going on. But what can, do we have any kind of, I don't want to hold anybody to any dates. But I mean, if we don't hear anything from the state, we have to just assume we're going to move ahead with certain things. I mean, do you have any kind of timeframes? Because I know, just as a parent of elementary students, that it's, the waiting is worse than 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 the end product. And it's, you know, it's, it's just reassuring to know if we have a, you know, not necessarily what the plan is, but at least parts of the plan.
Yeah, we are expecting some guidance. The the next date we were given was about this week or next week. So here in the next two weeks, we think the state will reveal their plan. It's very much aligned to our our components in that there is a social emotional piece, there's an academic piece, there's an operational piece. And there's a student wellness piece. So we feel like we're very poised and positioned to take that information and incorporate it into our work. And so we've just been doing all the groundwork here, hearing from our stakeholders and kind of seeing what's top of mind for people as as we move forward. And again, the, I don't think the state really wants to dictate to us every step. They know that each context is different, each resource pool is different for every school district. And so they're trying to, you know, give guidance and standards for an entire state, knowing there's local contexts. And so that's why our relationship with the Health Commissioner and the other superintendents in the county is is going to be critical. Again, there's not going to be any cookie cutter plans because each district has their own conditions to consider. We just want to be as aligned and in step with each other as possible as we respond as a as a community.
And then as part of the of the scenario planning, is is everything on the table? I mean, as far as it looked like it from the graph, whether it be 100% virtual, 100% in-building, some in-between plans for if parents aren't comfortable sending their kids, is adjustment of the calendar still, is that up for, you know, for change as well?
Yeah, at this point, yes, we're putting a lot on the table. I would say we did go out there and specifically ask if there was a remote option inside of West Claremont. K-12, would that be a choice? And so we are getting a return on that. There are families who, regardless if we come back face-to-face or not, would want to choose that option. And so we're going to highly consider it because we want to have our students be in West Claremont. We want to serve them well. And so that is something that we're looking at and considering with the workforce that we currently have. And so it's certainly a factor. In terms of a remote learning like we were in the spring, we do believe that that would have to be triggered by something beyond us. There isn't, there isn't a clear reason right now why we would, on our own, go to a remote learning district. Unless compelled from another outside force. And so that, again, goes back to us working with the Health Commissioner and being abreast of what's going on in our local community that might cause a response. Because you've got to look at our workforce and its ability to to come to work and maintain the schedule and do the things that we're asking them to do. As well as, you know, what's going on around us to consider. So it is a whole continuum of considerations. And again, we'll be picking those signposts that will tell us when this, this and this happen. When these factors all line up, then that's going to, that's going to trigger us to go to remote learning or it's going to cause us to do X. And so we're going to try to be really clear about that so that people can plan. And again, our number one goal is to come back to school face-to-face. Like, we know that's where we serve our students best. We're just going to be prepared for a continuum of options.
And the calendar, is that also up for?
Yeah, the calendar is up for discussion. At this point, we've been saying, we're just coming back. As we've said, we're going to come. We haven't been given any compelling data to do anything any differently at this point. We don't feel like our crystal ball is quite shiny enough to make a full-fledged calendar change. But we do know things such as, we know we're not able to get a summer school kind of programming up and running this summer. But we know that's going to be important for the following summer. And that there's going to be, have to, have to have some specific planning for students that work to fill any gaps. And so how we use our time and how we use our days, I think, will continue to be looked at. It's at this point, I'm just not sure it's telling us we're going to have a different start date. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Item 6.05 is superintendent committees. Does anybody have anything they'd like to report out on? Okay, and then finally, then, item 6.06 is superintendent comments. And I just wanted to let you know that I had sent a blog out earlier this week. Or maybe it was last week now. I'm losing track of days. I guess it was last week. About racial discrimination and the civil unrest in our society and our world and just all the challenges that that we are facing. And I will say that I got some positive responses from that blog and I also got some some criticisms. And what I've been doing is reaching out to families that had had some issues and just starting the conversation. We clearly have some work to do in our community and we are committed to doing that. We're committed to coming to the table, having hard conversations and working to improve our practices as a district, to improve our curriculum as a district, and then improving our ways of working. And so this is certainly not a flip a switch kind of proposition. This is going to take some heavy lifting and some work over time. But I really feel like I'm meeting some people along the way that are going to be great partners and provide some great insights. So I just wanted you to to stay up on that as we continue to grow in our ability to serve a diverse population. To be inclusive and to attend to the equity, the equity issues that do exist across our system. That I believe during this time of COVID-19 and the civil unrest, just there's just been a spotlight put on it. That 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 we need to start talking about more intense intensely. And then finally, I just wanted to just say, there's a lot of our families that are going through a really hard time this week. Some really devastating news has kind of been coming through our office on a couple of different families. And our heart just goes out to them and they're in our hearts and our prayers. And, you know, our community can be at its very best in in difficult times. And so I'm just hoping that people reach out to these families, that lend a hand, lend an ear, whatever it is, that we come together as West Claremont. And and be the best of our versions of ourself as as we comfort families that are just going through some tremendous times. So that's all I have for tonight. I just, I thank you for the time to to share with you our status on planning for next year. Because it's going to be some interesting work ahead of us here in the this summer.
Thank you. Moving on to board business. At the last meeting, we voted to engage K-12 in the search for the next treasurer for West Claremont Schools. And we had a handful of people that applied. Chris Moore with K-12 reached out to numerous people throughout the state to bring attention to the open position. Engaging both interest and maybe applying to the district and just seeing what was out there and who's coming up through that might be future ready. The candidate pool in general was very shallow. Chris delivered five candidates to us for consideration. Of the five, we felt that there were only three quality candidates that on paper matched the desires of the district. We interviewed all three people and brought all three of them back for a second interview. And included our cabinet administrators and several of our principals throughout the district. After we conducted all of the interviews, the Board of Education, along with the entire interview team involved. Unanimously felt there was one candidate that possessed the skills, talent and knowledge needed to lead the district into the continuous rising stature. There was a huge gap in knowledge between candidate one and candidates two and three. We took a look at not only their their knowledge, their skill base, et cetera, but what the needs of the district is and will be over the next five years. As last meeting, Kelly went through the five-year forecast. And we we looked at each candidate to see which of the three was best prepared to lead West Claremont. And and secure our our funding. And that person that we've felt was the the best candidate, if you will, was Mr. Dan Romano. In addition to his skill set and his knowledge and talent that I think, we all think, is going to serve us best. And Dan also possesses the uniqueness of being well-connected throughout the state, coming from the Toledo area. He's well-connected, especially with those that can possibly influence the reconsideration of how public schools are funded. So given the consideration, I'd like to make the motion to hire Mr. Dan Romano as the next superintendent. I would like to ask for a second. Mr. Rudy.
Tammy, you said superintendent. I think you
I'm sorry, treasurer. I'm sorry. I'm looking at, I'm looking at Natasha superintendent as the next treasurer. Thank you for that correction, Dan. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Mrs. Brinkman.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
I think your description was very
Mr. Schaff?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
Motion approved. I will also like to add that Mrs. Delaney passed along a message earlier today. That she really hoped that Mr. Romano would be voted on favorably and she wished she could join us this evening. So that it would be a unanimous vote. But nonetheless, we would like to introduce Mr. Romano. There he is. And we'd like to welcome you to, as the newest member to our team. I think you need to remove, mute, unmute yourself. There you are.
There we go. So I I had to pick myself up off the floor when you had said superintendent, but I'm okay now.
I apologize. I was looking at Natasha as I was speaking and it just came out.
That's okay. Thank you. Again, I appreciate all the work that President Brinkman, you and the board went through. Appreciate that you involved the superintendent and the current treasurer in your process. It was great last week to meet, you know, the superintendent's team, you know, with you guys in the room. That really helped me out. Know that you've understand the importance of this job and this position. So I appreciate that and thank you for that. And excited about coming to the district and working with Superintendent Adams and and the board and making some good things happen.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone have any comments for Mr. Romano? No? All righty. Well, welcome to the team.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, moving on in the agenda. Board business. Let's start with Mr. Rudy. Do you have anything? I think he's frozen.
He's thinking really hard. He's contemplating.
I wasn't sure if it was him or me because I've been frozen a lot.
Mr. Chumley, do you want to go ahead and start?
I don't have much to say. As sad as it is to see Miss Sandra go, I am, I am excited to work with Mr. Romano and look forward to our and look forward to our time together.
Thank you. Mr. Schaaf?
No, my, my internet will probably break up anyway, so I'll probably freeze up and drop off like Mr. Rudy did.
Thank you. All right, I have nothing as well, besides again, welcoming Mr. Romano. We're going to miss you, Kelly, but I think that the district is well-positioned for the, the security of the district going forward. So thank you for your service and welcome to Mr. Romano. Anything further from the board? Okay?
I don't think Mr. Rudy can get back on. He's having internet issues, so.
Okay. All right. Well, we will adjourn the meeting. Our next meeting will be on Monday, June 29th. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved for a second.
I'll put that on the floor in the form of a second motion and ask Mrs. Sininger to call roll.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mrs. Brinkman?
Yes.
Mr. Chumley?
Yes.
I do not believe Mr. Rudy is here, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. He's, he's out.
You have three votes, Madam President.
There you go. We'll adjourn the meeting and we'll see everybody on Monday, the 29th. Thanks for coming.